I will call to order the Monday, September 8th meeting of the Verona Common Council. Begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Schofield, if you would, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
And Alderperson yours.
Here.
We have everyone here, therefore we have a quorum, so thank you for that, everyone. Next, we have public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening, there should be a sign-up sheet at the podium, and we would ask that you would sign in, and if anyone wishes to speak, if you would give your name and address, please. Is there anyone that wishes to speak this evening under public comment? Anyone that desires to speak this evening? Not seeing anyone. I'll ask for the final time. Anyone wants to speak this evening under public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Included with your packets were the minutes from the August 25th meeting of the Common Council. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Under mayor's business, very briefly this evening, we had another successful Ironman event over the weekend, and really haven't heard of any reported complaints, so thank you to everyone that was involved with Ironman again. I know we reported this at the last meeting, but school has begun, so please, everyone, make sure that you're driving safely everywhere on the streets, not only at the crosswalks, but let's make sure that we keep our young people safe in this community. So with that, we will move on to the administrator's report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. A couple of updates this evening. First, coming up in a week will be Epic's annual user group meeting, held September 15th through the 18th. At last count, we're looking at approximately 9,000-plus customers that will be in town visiting during that event, and staying in hotels throughout the Dane County-Madison area, as well as up in the Wisconsin Dells area. City staff have been working with Epic on planning for that event to make sure that we're prepared as far as traffic, transportation, and emergency services, and look forward to welcoming people to the city of Verona. Coming up, Dane County cities and villages will be holding a membership meeting on September 24th at 5:00 PM in the Village of Marshall. The executive committee will be talking later this week to finalize the agenda for that meeting. I anticipate that the DaneCom radio system and status of that project will be one of the items discussed, as well as Capitol Area Regional Planning Commission and the status of CARPSY and their budget. A couple of events coming up in the city. We have groundbreakings for two projects. The first is the Flex Building Number Two in Liberty Business Park. The groundbreaking for that building will be held on Thursday at 10:00 AM. That's this Thursday, the 11th, at 10:00 AM on the site off of Liberty Drive and Liberty Business Park. And then on Wednesday, the 17th, there'll be a groundbreaking for the new Fairfield Inn and Suites Hotel located on Half Mile Road. That is the 17th at 10:00 AM, and certainly everyone is invited to attend those events. And then the city is continuing to work on the budget process. We're at the point now where department operating budgets are due into administration, and we've started holding meetings at a staff level to begin reviewing the department budgets. We'll be working with the finance committee members to finalize the dates and schedule for finance committee meetings on the budget, which we anticipate starting late September, potentially September 29th, and continuing into the month of October, with the goal of having finance committee make a recommendation by the end of October, and then discussion at the city council level in the month of November. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions this evening for Mr. Burns? I don't see any. Thank you, Bill. We will move on then to the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Several items this evening. The first is the Lincoln Street reconstruction. The asphalt binder course has been placed, and the street terrace landscaping is probably 90 percent complete. The only landscaping that hasn't been completed is next to some driveways that still need to be constructed. Several property owners are replacing their entire asphalt driveway with their own contractors, and the city's contractor is waiting for those driveways to be completed before finishing the landscaping and placing the asphalt surface course. Those driveways should be completed over the next couple of weeks, and then the asphalt surface paving will follow that next week. Scenic Ridge Phase Six, asphalt binder course has been completed. Electric telephone, gas, and cable companies are installing their facilities at this time. Sidewalk construction is scheduled for the week of September 22nd, with street terrace restoration to follow. That will complete the work in this subdivision until next spring, when the asphalt surface course will be installed. Cathedral Point Phase Four, north segment of the phase has had the asphalt binder course or was installed today. Construction of electric, gas, telephone, and cable utilities in the north portion will start next week. South portion of the phase has a sanitary sewer completed, and the water main is completed except for the water services. That work is ongoing. Some of the storm sewer in the south portion has also been installed. All work in the north portion should be completed by early October, and work in the south portion completed by the middle of November. Prairie Oaks Phase Three, again, the asphalt binder is down. All that needs to be done is the sidewalk installation and street terrace restoration. Apartment building construction has commenced. Some of the sidewalk may not be installed until next spring to allow for the completion of the buildings. Locust Drive Reconstruction. Street has been closed to through traffic and a detour established. Lion Energy is working on relocating a section of their underground cable at this time. Soon as this work is completed, the street grading and utility work will commence. Project is scheduled for completion in the middle of November. Liberty Drive, asphalt surface course on Liberty Drive is scheduled for installation on September 19th, and the bid opening for Laser Street and Clarity Street construction is scheduled for September 17th here at City Hall. And finally, Epic Water Main's contractor has completed the water main installation to the Annex Two building, and has been working on the water main improvements for Campus Four. Water main construction will be suspended later this week in preparation for the user group next week. That completes my report for this evening. If there are questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Don't see any, Bob. Thank you.
Welcome.
We will move on then to committee reports. We will begin with the plan commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-040, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use known as Hop House Brewing Company at 231 South Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Linder.
This proposed conditional use permit would allow Hop House Brewing Company to occupy 2,500 square feet of space for a microbrew pub at 231 South Main Street. The business will brew beer on-site and sell directly to customers in the taproom. Approximately 90 percent of the beer will be sold on-site, with the remainder being sold to local establishments. Limited food will be available for purchase. The planned hours of operation are 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM, Thursday through Sunday, although the applicant has indicated that they may wish to adjust these hours for special events. A discussion by the plan commission included the amount of parking on the property and in the area, and the need to ensure that patrons are parking in inappropriate locations. The plan commission held the required public hearing on September 2nd, 2014, and voted four to nothing to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit.
You've heard the explanation, the background. She asked me, are there any questions for the plan commission or for city staff? Mr. Yours?
First of all, I think this is a great addition into our downtown. It's just another option for people to come in and use the downtown, and I wish it the best success. The one question I do have, what was the discussion with the plan commission about outdoor seating?
Mr. Linder.
That was going to come at a future date. There is no planned outdoor seating right now. It's got to come through a separate process, correct, Mr. Sarah?
Mr. Sarah?
The outdoors, excuse me, the outdoor seating would require its own conditional use permit, so if it comes back, it would actually come back as a public hearing before the plan commission with a recommendation to the council. But it's potential item. The applicant has indicated an interest in doing that, but nothing at this time.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments? Mr. Touche?
Please note, I will be abstaining from the vote.
Okay. Questions, comments on the motion? The motion before you is to approve Resolution R-14-040. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, and will at the minutes reflect that Mr. Touche abstained. Is there anything else in the plan commission?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. We will move on then to the finance committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $377,949.33.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to the Bond Trust Services Corporation, $68,635 for a refunding of our bonds from 2013. It's a payment for that. Next one being to Crack Filling Services Corporation for crack sealing and spot sealing this year, $65,000. And finally, to Waste Management of Wisconsin for trash collection, $43,190.68.
You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions on the payment of bills? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the payment of bills in an amount totaling $377,949.33 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-041, requesting exemption from the county library tax.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Since the city funds its own library, which exceeds the minimum standards established by the Dane County Board, the city may request an exemption from paying the Dane County library tax. We do this every year. In order to maintain this exemption, the city needs to take action each year, formally making a request to the Dane County Board. For the 2015 budget, the required appropriation would have been or is $604,901. The 2014 approved budget includes a total tax levy for the library of $1,123,131, including $664,424 for operations and $458,707 for debt service on the facility, so we would exceed the minimums, and we would request at this time that you would approve the exemption.
Again, you've heard the explanation. Are there questions for the finance committee or for city staff? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution R-14-041 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else in the finance committee?
No, sir. That would be all.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Public Works Sewer and Water, Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9C1, I would like to make a motion to approve an agreement for the final design of County Trunk Highway M.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Touche?
Thank you. The city of Verona has been working with the city of Madison and Dane County on the planning reconstruction of Highway County M from Prairie Hill Road to Cross Country Road, including the intersection of County Highway M and County Highway PD. The project consists of the reconstruction of County Highway M into an improved divided roadway with sidewalk, bike lanes, and turn lanes. The intersection of County Highway M and County Highway PD will be a signalized intersection with a free-flow bypass lane for westbound traffic on County Highway PD. Design work for the project is intended to be completed in 2015, with construction starting in 2016. The agreement covers the final design, engineering, and the production of final plans, specifications, and estimates of the project. The cost for the final design work would be shared by Dane County, the city of Madison, and the city of Verona. Just note, the city of Verona's portion is $191,000 of a total $1,119,000 project. Our portion is 13 percent of the total budget. Also, please note, it describes the design work coming from Prairie Hill Road all the way down to Cross Country Road. Our portion, in essence, the 13 percent, is our portion below that intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions for the public works committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the agreement for the final design of County Trunk Highway M. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9C2, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-14-042, authorizing the initiation of the transfer of regulatory authority and responsibility over Nine Mound Road from the town of Verona to the city of Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
I'll ask Bill to explain.
Okay. Mr. Burns, please.
The city is planning to reconstruct Nine Mound Road from approximately County Highway PD to Cross Country Road in 2015. This project has been contemplated as part of the Tiff District Number Seven improvements to accommodate traffic in this part of the city, including traffic with the Epic Development. As part of this project, since this roadway, or a large portion of the right-of-way for this roadway, is located within the town of Verona, the city attorney recommends going through a process to transfer the authority and responsibility of that road to the city, and that would both give the city the ability to do the reconstruction and control over the design of the construction, as well as taking over the responsibility for constructing and maintaining this roadway. This process, which is outlined in Wisconsin statute 8221, is a two-step process, and it requires action by both the town board and the city council. The first step is passing a resolution initiating the process. The Verona Town Board has acted on this on September 2nd and approved a similar resolution to what's in the council packet this evening, following action by the common council this evening that would start the process. There are several required notices that need to be made. There needs to be a public hearing held, and then final action taken by both municipalities. We do have a couple of options for that final action. That could either be taken separately by the town board or the city council, or if possible, the city attorney recommended that we would take the action at a joint meeting. We've suggested a date of October 15th at 7:00 PM for a joint meeting to take this action, and we don't need to finalize that as part of this resolution, but one of the questions that we did have this evening is if people are available at that time, because we would need to include that in the notices for the public hearing of when we plan to take that final action.
Questions or comments? Mr. Linder?
Is there any cost to one side or the other to make this transfer?
Mr. Burns?
Like, for the land, I guess, for the roadway?
There is not a cost or a payment for the transfer of the roadway. The city would have responsibility for maintaining that roadway in the future, and certainly the cost to construct the roadway, but there would not be a transfer or payment for this jurisdictional transfer, this transfer of authority.
Thank you.
And once the transfer is made, then the city would receive the general transportation aids from the state that currently is going to the town.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, just to comment on that, for the city of Verona, what the mayor's referring to is there's a general transportation aid formula, which the municipality qualifies for revenue based on, it's a formula that takes in two factors. One is based on costs that are incurred for roadwork, the other is miles of streets. And generally, for municipalities, and I believe this is the case for the city of Verona, we're more likely to qualify for a higher dollar amount under the expenditure portion rather than the miles, so there may not be a direct correlation between taking this over and increasing our aid payment under that formula, but that potentially could have an impact for the town. I don't think we're talking about a huge dollar amount there, but there is the potential impact of that formula.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Other questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve Resolution R-14-042. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche, is there anything else from Public Works Sewer and Water?
That would be all.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Mr. Yours, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a special event permit for the Homecoming Parade to be held on Friday, September 26th, from Rita Mortensen of the Verona Area High School.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Mr. Yours?
Public Safety Committee met on this earlier this evening. It's the same route that they've been having for years. There are really no concerns. It's a great event for the entire community to get involved with the school district.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. Questions or comments for the Public Safety Committee or city staff? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving this special event permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Yours.
Thank you.
Personnel Committee and Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Although there are agenda items listed on the common council's agenda for this evening, the Personnel Committee agenda was not separately posted, so we did not meet this evening, and will meet at a later date to discuss the listed items.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to old business. Under old business, we have discussion and possible action regarding potential lease of the city's old library building at 130 North Franklin Street. Mr. Burns, I would ask if you would provide the background, please.
Yes, thank you. The city's lease with the Sugar River United Methodist Church for that property ended on August 31st of this year. Earlier in August, the city council discussed the use of the property and had directed staff to solicit letters of interest for the lease of the building. We had published a notice in the Verona Press on the city's website, and also talked to parties that had expressed interest in the property. The deadline for submitting a letter of interest was September 2nd. The city received two letters of interest from Redeemer Bible Fellowship and LifePoint Baptist Church. That notice requesting the letters had also requested that the parties include a proposed lease rate as well as a term for the lease. Based on the two proposals that were received, I believe both of those organizations could be a good fit, but Redeemer Bible Fellowship had proposed a higher monthly lease rate. That rate was proposed at $4,800 for a term of two years. They are interested in the property and would like to be in the space on September 28th or earlier if possible. The terms of a lease agreement, as we have discussed, would be similar to the terms that the city had with the Sugar River United Methodist Church. At this point, the recommendation from staff would be to take action to pursue a lease agreement with Redeemer Bible Fellowship based on the proposed lease rate for two years, and based on the terms with the prior lease for the Sugar River United Methodist Church. And if so directed, we could draft that lease and bring that back for potential action by the common council on September 22nd at the next meeting.
Mr. Yours?
I have two questions. What was the lease that we received from Sugar River?
Mr. Burns, please.
The monthly amount that we were receiving for the lease at its final term was $4,593 a month.
And what was generally the length of those lease agreements with Sugar River?
Mr. Burns?
Yes, just looking back to the term under the original lease, I believe the original lease started November 1st of 2006 and ran through October 31st of 2012, at which point the city did either two or three extensions to that, generally for a one- or a two-year term, or a one-year allowing for a renewal for an additional year. I believe the last agreement we did with them included an eight-month term, because they knew that they were looking for a change in the property and were interested in a shorter-term lease.
Mr. Yours?
You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to the length of a two-year lease. I just want to keep in mind our own downtown plans and the trajectory we have for that, and I don't want, you know, there's nothing against the church who's going to be coming into the building, but I also don't want to block our own progress that we've been seeking for a number of years as well. So is city staff comfortable with the two-year agreement, knowing our downtown plans, and, you know, hopefully drawing some Tiff boundaries and things of that nature?
Mr. Burns?
Yes, at a staff level, to answer your question, yes, I think we are comfortable with the two-year term, given where we are with the downtown planning. We are talking about projects for 2015 and streetscaping and things that would likely be located in an area farther south from this, within the current Tiff district boundary. And I think that we are, at least some period of time before we'd be in a position to be amending or making changes to Tiff districts that would extend farther to the north. I think this gives us some time to plan for that area and provides revenue for the city in that interim, and we can reevaluate as we get closer to the end of that two-year period.
Thank you.
Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill has staff compared how Sugar River and the pantry coexisted in the building compared to how it's going to be intended moving forward.
Good question. Mr. Burns?
Yes, the lease with Sugar River was for approximately 9,600 square feet on the main level of the building, and it also included a clause that allowed for use of areas within the lower level when they're available, and also identified that there was space to be used, and that is currently being used by the food pantry on the lower level. Just from initial discussions with representatives from Redeemer Bible Fellowship, that they would be comfortable with similar terms, including occupation of that lower level by the food pantry. They may have some interest in using some of the other areas in the lower level occasionally, but I don't believe that we would have a problem with similar language that would allow the food pantry to maintain in their current location.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Steiner?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Burns, will the income from this rental property be used to pay down the debt on our library?
Mr. Burns?
The rental income from our lease with Sugar River has been used for that purpose. That's something that the council annually, as part of the budget process, could review, but I believe that would be the intention, that we would continue using that for that purpose. We would have a portion, we have a current portion of the lease revenue now that's used for when improvements are needed to the building, such as the doors that were worked on recently. We do anticipate that there would be some improvements needed to the parking lot and to the roof. The net proceeds would be available to offset debt service for the library, as currently is being done.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just, I like the idea of continuing to pay down the debt for the library with the proceeds. And I think the, getting back to Alderperson's earlier point, I think, I think that the lease term will be good enough, long enough to generate revenue for the city, but not too long that it's going to kind of hamper downtown development, I think, with a hop house coming in that's an interesting and unique project, and I think there's a lot of potential momentum around downtown, so I totally understand not wanting to sort of like block off an area from development, but I think, I think this is a reasonable length for the lease, and I think it'll be a good way to bring in money for the city.
Further questions or comments? Other questions, comments? I was just checking with Bill. If we're talking about an agreement that would be very similar to what we had with Sugar River Methodist Church, it would be my suggestion that we would take action this evening to approve, moving forward, and that we make the agreement contingent upon final approval of the city administrator and legal counsel, and that way, the church would know quicker. We wouldn't have to wait two weeks. I just, I really don't see any problem with moving forward with that if the council is comfortable. And that, that's just my thought. So we wouldn't have to wait for two weeks to come back to give approval to the agreement. So we wouldn't have to wait for two weeks to come back to give approval to the agreement. The agreement would be contingent upon approval of the city administrator and city's legal counsel. I throw that out there as an option. Other questions, comments, potential motions? Ms. Ricky?
Did you say when the start and end dates of that two-year lease would be?
Mr. Burns?
We had, when we advertised the notice, it indicated October 1st is the start date. The church is interested in getting in at least somewhat before that, so I think that we would likely start whenever they would be available to take possession of the property in September, and then the two years would start from October 1 of this year and run forward, just to keep it clean with the start of the month.
Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of giving staff, you know, giving staff the direction as you suggested. I just really want to emphasize how important the Verona Food Pantry is, and I think at a minimum, they need to match what was afforded to them in the previous tenant.
And I agree with that. And when Mr. Burns and I had conversations last week, I said I want to make sure that that was noted in his report. So it is not the city's intent at all to move the food pantry out or harm in any way what they're currently doing. Mr. Years?
I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Touche's point about the food pantry, and in that vein, I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with the contingency that it meets the requirements of the city administrator.
And legal counsel?
And legal counsel.
We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. You've heard the motion, you've heard the background. Are there additional questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are on new business. Ms. Schofield, do we have operator licenses this evening?
There is one operator license for approval, and that's from Virginia Canous, and she is employed at Prairie Oaks Sitco.
Do we have any potential motions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, and the operator license is approved. Do we have any announcements this evening? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, just for the Nine Mound Road item, I wanted to check and see if people are available on the 15th. I've heard back from some, but not everyone yet. I should add, too, that that would be a normal meeting night for the Park Recreation and Forestry Commission. We are checking to see if there's the potential of moving that meeting up a little bit to accommodate both meetings that evening, but wanted to see if there's anyone that knows that there would be a conflict that evening, I guess.
No problem. Mr. Years, you had your hand up. You're fine. Any conflicts? Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.